I will call this regular meeting of the USD 431 School Board to order. We'll call everyone's present except Kevin and Jesse. Adoption of the agenda. I don't think that there's any changes that we need to make to it.
I move to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero. Number four, opportunity for visitors.
So I'd like to introduce John Stern to come on up here to the table. John is running for the state senate and he would like to just introduce himself to you all. And so I'll just let him take it away.
Thank you. I spoke with Mr. Kraus a couple of weeks ago and he said you have this opportunity at the beginning of sessions. He suggested I come over here, so I appreciate the suggestion. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm running because I want the vote of the 33rd senate district to serve the people of the 33rd senate district. And too often on important issues of schools and taxes, the legislature winds up serving political lobbyists rather than the people of the communities. I grew up on a dairy wheat farm over at Bushton. I graduated from Bushton High School. I got an engineering degree from Kansas State University. I worked in the natural gas pipeline business as an engineer and in field operations management. I worked in Grapevine, in Omaha, in Pratt, and Bushton. And my wife and I live and we raised our family in Elland Wood. And we've done all the kind of typical things of serving our communities and our kids and our schools and our churches that I think are probably familiar to a lot of you here. I'm going to give you just an example or two of what I see is going on. One is the last school bill that was approved. I noticed you reviewed that at your last meeting, so maybe some of us is familiar with it. But the legislature passed a requirement that schools, as we teach our at-risk students, if those scores of those students don't improve enough, then our schools will have less funding that we use to educate for these at-risk students. Another example I mentioned, it happened in 2022 when there was a bill considered to reverse a Brownback era cut to the state aid that we get for capital bond issues that reduce burdens for local property tax owner payers rather. And at the last minute in that process, a conference committee cut the historical matching rate of 75% down to 51% and all that aid disappeared. That's a particular concern for us. One thing I didn't mention is that I'm on the school board at Elland Wood. I'm in my 11th year there. We're looking at a bond to do things like fix roofs and air conditioners and a few other things like that. And with this change that's happened from history, we'll have 38% higher property tax bills for everything we pay. And I don't know if you guys have looked at that. There's some information out there. I think for Hoytonton, if you have, do you guys have a bond issue now?
Yeah, ours were passed before 2015.
Yeah, so you're okay. So when you go after that, I think Hoytonton's increases something like 35%.
Yeah.
And like nine of the school districts in the senate district have increases over 20%. So I think that's enough motivation and change in what the legislature has done as far as serving lobbyists rather than people of our districts to motivate me for to throw my hat in the ring and hope to have the opportunity to gain the trust and votes of people and make my way into legislature and change some of the actions of the legislature to benefit the people of the district. So I appreciate the time to talk to you. If you have any comments or questions, I'm happy to hear them. If you have any input or ideas, that would be great too. But I appreciate the time you gave me so far.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, consent agenda. You have the minutes of the 5-6 meeting, the minutes of the special meeting on May 10th, and the 5-22 special meeting, cash summary report, check summary, and the activities account. Anything you need to?
I don't think there, well, I mean, I just want, I just want to reemphasize, you know, we, you guys are over, you know, all monies. You know, the cash summary report and the, I guess it says two cash, or check summary report and a cash summary report. That's all of the money in the, in the district. The check summary is any of our funds, money coming in and coming out. Activities account, just a, just a reemphasis that that is all activities funds. That is all generated through student organizations and/or through activity gates. And then that's where we also pay our officials out of, or if they're student activities, that is paid out of that as well. So they're, they're, they're still in our money, but 99% of the money that is in the student activities account is student money. So just, just a, just a clarification there.
The negative in the S R three money?
Yes. So S R three money is, is federal money. So federal money will go into the negative and then we have a deadline to request. To request. Yep. Yep. So it's a, it's a reimbursable account. So yep. Good question. And that's the same thing with Title I money. Yep.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Passes five zero. Okay. Item six, old business. A is building needs assessment.
So I, I put the building needs assessment on here. This is what was actually approved last year. And this is an example of the, the form that I filled out through Greenbush. And then it pretty much generated a, a, a needs assessment form for us. You know, a couple, a couple of areas that were on last year's and will continue to be on it in some way, shape, or form. You know, just the idea of fully funding special education, our funding as a whole, and then through declining enrollment. You know, that is something that we're definitely going to need to continue to look at. Our district has seen increases, especially even with just the time that I've been here. But historically, we've seen increases in lower socioeconomic population as well as increases in numbers with students with an IEP. So those are all going to be reflected within that needs assessment along with some areas like, are there some areas in state assessment that we would like to see improved? We will be addressing literacy in there as well. So I just wanted to kind of keep that front of mind. I plan on having that ready to be approved by the August meeting, which means it'll, I'll have one for you, a refreshed one for July-August meeting. And then it has to be approved no later than the date that we approve the budget, which typically is in the September meeting. So really no action at this time.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move on to item B, capital project planning update.
So as you, if you take a look at that meeting, or not that meeting, if you take a look at that, that document that I put on there, you know, there are, there are boxes that are red and I'm still, I mean, it's nothing set in stone. But the red only means that we have, that we have allocated money out of capital outlay, out of this year's capital outlay. So, so total, we have about 1.3 million in the, in capital outlay. We only get about $420,000 and I actually kind of put $400,000 in capital outlay or in this document to kind of, kind of, you know, underestimate so that we, you know, so there's some leeway in there. So the red only means that we've, we've taken care of or we've spent this year's allocation of capital outlay. So trying not to, you know, trying not to spend down capital outlay, obviously. I want to make sure that that's there for a rainy day, but, you know, making sure that we have plans for the future to be able to start working towards replacement of, of items. One area for next year to really kind of keep on your radar is we did have Corel Roofing come out and do a roofing analysis of all of our buildings. Roosevelt is the highest priority roof. They, they estimate that it needs to be done the summer of '25. And so that, that's kind of refocused and reshaped the idea of, of replacing that roof next summer, figuring out how we pay for that, whether we, whether we pay for it all out of capital outlay, whether we finance part of it or both. And so, so that's just an area to kind of keep an eye on. You know, I, I will share with you, the other roofs are in, in very good shape. You know, those, those are not as high priority. We do have some questioning, questionable parts of Lincoln, but that's under warranty from when it was built. So we're going to contact that company and have them come out. But Roosevelt definitely is the, the highest priority and it, and it is the oldest roof. It's not, I mean, it's not that we're putting it high priority because it's a young roof and we've had issues with it. It's our actual oldest roof of the, of the entire district.
On Lincoln, when does that warranty run out?
It's a, it's either a 15 or a 30-year warranty. I'd have to get with Tyler on, on that specifically. But we've just still got some time with that one. And then one of the considerations, our insurance doesn't, isn't really pushing this, but there are insurances out there. The kind of the standard normal is, is 15 years on a roof. So, so that's really, I don't think we have pressure from our insurance to make sure that we replace our roofs in 15 years, but that, that's kind of out there hanging as a number. And we're, we're okay on almost all of our roofs in terms of that age. But we're, we know, we know we've got intrusion issues with Roosevelt. We have, you know, we have, we have seepage issues. We, we know that we have issues with Roosevelt roof. So that's definitely the one that we want to be high priority for next year.
Patrick, I had a question.
Yes.
I think you probably need to reallocate or up the amount on vehicles. So notice that vehicle replacement costs were set at $30,000, which sounds pretty low considering the price of a vehicle nowadays, especially considering you were replacing a Suburban or something on that.
Yeah.
So that number looks low.
Okay. And many of the, the future years are pretty rough estimates still. So yeah, but great, great point.
Do you have the number then? Just because this is a PDF, otherwise I'd just crunch it real quick on that, just on the projections with that roof eating up quite a bit of that reserve. When the ending balance would be given, our normal annual fund and the expected projects to date, what that would leave the projected end and balance at?
I don't have that number. But I can, I mean, if, if I'm understanding you right, if we were only to spend the amount that, that we have allocated in the budget for that particular fiscal year, I mean, we, we would, we would far exceed. Or are you talking about what we have in carryover?
The projected total pro, like if we take the current cash balance.
Okay.
Plus the future year's expected annual fund and the difference between that and the expected projects, what our expected reserve?
What our expected reserve?
I was gonna say, feel free to correct terms on future.
No, no. That's, that's okay.
Just to, just to have an idea of what we're projecting our reserves where, so we can
Yeah.
see where we're fluctuating at.
And if that, if that's something that you would rather have me have in here is, is, okay, how would that affect our, our overall reserves? I can, I can have those allocations like put in this so that when I do a PDF and send it to you guys, then, then you're able to see that.
And I can come up and crunch it too.
Well, I, I know. It's, it's multiple documents and so, yeah. So I understand. But I can, I can get those numbers for you.
I mean, is that a value? Like, does the other board members think that it's a valuable thing to keep kind of a ticker on?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Not will move on to C, non-resident enrollment procedures.
Aren't we so excited about this? Okay, so, so we just, we just got back from the USA Conference. One of the sessions was ask your lawyer about stuff. One of the main topics was the passage of ABCC. And, or actually not the passage of JBCC, but the passage of Senate Bill 387. So the senate did, you know, the, the House and senate both passed Senate Bill 387. So it went to the governor's desk. I, I, I'm going to apologize. That's one that I'm not exactly sure if she signed it yet or not. I've not heard a big uproar, so I'm assuming that it's been signed into law. And so there are some major procedural pieces in 387 that definitely affects the policy that we passed back in January. So a rundown of those, so you don't, I mean, you can go back and forth between what we passed and what was, what was suggested to be placed in. One area that we've already addressed is grandfathering in our own out-of-district students. So that was added into Senate Bill 387. Okay, so we, we have already addressed that issue in our policy JBCC. Okay? Congratulations to you guys on that one. I appreciate that. Also added to 387 is we can actually, we can actually vet students based on a student in good standing. So if we have a student apply, we can take a look at number of credits expected, days that they've been absent, number of days suspended in school or out of school. And those are the three main areas that we will add to our application for students to come in. So how many credits that they have expected to earn at the completion of this school year, number of days absent, and number of days in school or out of school suspended. Okay? And then we can then vet those students based on students in good standing. We could already vet those students based on whether they were expelled, but it did not say anything about in-school or out-of-school suspension. The deadline, the deadline has now changed until, so the open window is June 1st to June 15th. So currently we are in non-resident approval time, application approving time. The, the application that was shared with you a couple of months ago has already been added to the website. There will be a revision to that tomorrow and it will go right back up on the website. And that is right on our opening website page. Scroll down underneath the pictures. On the far right-hand side is our non-resident application area. Okay? Perspective, non-resident students may be denied enrollment in the district if the student would have been deemed not in good standing during the school year. So, so these are some specific things. And then if a student is denied application, so if, if we do, if we say no, and then if we, or if we do our lottery and a student is not selected, the one other thing that has been added is that they can appeal to the board and that's state statute. So, and, and, and I'll be 100% honest with you. What does that process look like? I don't know. And neither did the lawyer. So we have to notify the parents by July 15th that the student is either accepted or denied. Then I would imagine there would be a, a timeframe that would need to be set aside for, for some sort of application to appeal or documentation to appeal. Okay? Questions about that? Questions about any of the changes that Senate Bill 387 has created?
Did the lawyer session have any information on our incorporated preschool?
Preschool?
So our preschool students can be considered our students?
So this is, yeah. So this is, yeah, they can be considered as they work through our process. This is only K-12. So yep.
But it exists in preschool students coming into kindergarten is grand, under the grandfather clause?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check on that, but yes, yes. If they, if they come to our preschool, then they continue on as our student. Okay? I'll double check on that again, but he did not address that specifically to answer your question, but I'll, I'll call and find out about that tomorrow morning.
And then are we planning any communication out to our own student body or students about if they're non, if they're, about this grandfather clause now that it's under statute?
We were not planning on that since we had already included that into the original policy that was passed. When did we do that? We had to do it by, in the December board meeting. So, so it was already, it was already a part of our original policy.
Yes.
Yep.
I just didn't know, because I knew we had that set of students that fit in that category.
Yeah. I mean, if we ended up with an application and I felt like it was, I mean, I would look it up on Power School and if they're already ours, I'd communicate with them directly.
Okay.
So, yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Item D, bus updates.
So was just, you know, wanting to clarify, just make sure everybody's on the same page. We, we did decide not to purchase the two buses. We did purchase the MCI bus from Coach Masters out of Kearney, Nebraska. Last, Tuesday of last week, Diane and, Diane and Bill, thank you, went up and picked that up and brought that home. She has already gotten it to first class auto and they are taking a look at putting a wrap on it. I was hoping to have some pictures and that didn't happen today, but I'll, I'll try to get those for you for this week's update. But very nice bus. I think we, I think we did the right thing on that. So that's a good thing. I do want to update you on some, some things that I found out recently about bus 12. If you remember, we did have an accident in the spring with bus 12. As they have finished all of the repairs, the hood does not seem to be matching up and they're afraid that maybe the, there may be a bend in the frame. So I am contacting KSDE Transportation as well as our insurance to see what the next steps would be and to make sure that we are not going to have safety issues if we put a bent frame bus on the road. So, so I, I'm going to cover my bases on, on all of those fronts with our insurance company, the insurance company that we made the claim with and then, and then KSDE. And both of the KSDE representatives are former highway patrolmen. So, so I'm pretty confident in the answer that, that I'll get from them and I'll keep you updated on that as well. So that's where we're at on buses. Everything else will, will go in for inspections and, and mechanical inspections. If there's been any issues, there's a lot of lights that get changed out. The other day, there was, you know, several days last week that, that they were washing buses and getting those ready to, for the next year. So, questions? If you'll remember, bus 12 is the jewel that we put that new engine in whenever I first got here. So not that that makes a huge difference, but it's my super favorite bus. So.
Okay. Move on to E, student handbook revision approvals.
Can this, or vet, no miss tonight?
That was the, that was the hope, because we tried to get them published in handbooks and different things. Oh, no, I'm looking at the handbooks too. Yeah, you did take a lot of stuff off, but that's okay.
Would you guys like to comment? Are there any major changes anywhere?
I didn't have any major changes in mine. Mine is the white stacking.
Wording, can we add a few pictures of the dress code?
Just graduation requirements. And there's one sticking point here that the CTE, that one full credit of advanced math, CTE, science, that's still kind of fleshed around a little bit. So I will get that changed as we go. Right now they're saying this is advanced science, not math and CTE. But those changes do begin with this year's freshman, so once that's all worked, I believe we all have a specific.
We have some wording changes. And then I updated, I should have, I changed the tardy policy to mirror the high schools a little bit more. We allow more tardies because we're middle schooler a little bit. We get distracted a little bit easier. So, but, and it makes it, you know, when, when we get to those excessive tardies, we deal with it in the office. I have a teacher going out to deal with it. And then I added a sentence to the dress code where our, you know, the shirts have to overlap the waistline of the jeans in a normal standing position. Just something easy for, especially male, to, to look at and judge, you know, without having, you know, just, just something simple we can see. Expedite the process.
Any changes to the activities ones?
No changes.
Were there any changes to the wellness policy?
No changes to the wellness policy or the communicable disease and illness.
I move to approve the 2024, 25 student handbooks and the student health and wellness policies as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes five zero. Item seven, new business, disposal and donation of surplus items.
So as I, I put in kind of the board notes here, old and deteriorating equipment in and under the high school bleachers. We're going to work on that this summer, get some of that out. I would like to go ahead and get old number three, the old activities bus on, on something to sell. I'm not sure if that's going to end up being Purple Wave or another avenue that Carrie has found for us. And then also Buster, the traveling bear. And then also, um, Buster, the traveling bear, uh, memorabilia. Krista has found that and would like to donate that to the Hoyzington Historical Society.
I wanna do a special presentation on Labor Day for everybody to come back and see. Do you guys approve it?
I've never heard of Buster.
It was my brother's generation.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I was gonna say.
I saw that, I was like, wow, that's going back a ways. To make you feel old there.
There's some pretty cool stuff. There's a sign photograph from Disney World and the different air bases and things and old pictures from old classrooms and it's pretty neat.
And Sunny Town, there's like a, a life-size drawing that was at Roosevelt. So, yeah, so.
He pieced them all together.
I move to approve the disposal sale or donation of surplus materials as presented.
I. Been moved in second at all in favor? Okay, student insurance, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so I, you know, after looking at this more closely, um, I'm, I'm actually pretty pleased. Student insurance did go up overall, and this would be, um, all three of the coverages that we cover. It's the, kind of the gap for students that are taking or out for activities. That gap between zero and twenty-five thousand dollars where, um, Kasia would, would pick up after that twenty-five thousand dollars. So we, we cover all of our kids that are involved with any, uh, extracurricular activities. Anytime they're in our vehicles, they, they cover that as well. You know, then, you know, just any kind of an accident issue, we have, we have coverage with that on our students as well as just, just kind of an umbrella policy. You know, from last year to this year, um, you know, just looking at the exact same numbers, which our numbers are a little bit lower. I haven't filled that in a hundred percent with our accurate numbers. But we're going up nineteen hundred and forty, nineteen hundred forty-six dollars or one thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents. Which is, which is not, not a huge increase. The other company that's out there, Student Assurance, um, which we went to a couple of years ago because of, of, of just increases in that area, um, would still be double of what, what we would be paying. You know, with, um, with, with KICKS or, or First Agency. First Agency is a part of our, um, KBS or KSB cooperation, uh, for insurance. It's a, it's a entity of that KBS, um, insurance policy. So, so I would recommend that we, um, approve the student insurance with First Agency, um, for the amount of six thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. I guess I don't, I don't move. I can't move. I would recommend, sorry.
I move to approve the student insurance through First Agency for the approximate amount of six thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor? Five zero. Property casualty liability insurance.
So we went to, um, insurance meeting, oh, right towards the end of school. I know that's, sounds pretty exciting, right Neil? So, um, but I, I was, I was pleasantly pleased and, and there was a, there was a murmur in the room, uh, whenever we did get our, um, our pricing summary. Um, so I believe, I believe in the, in the board packet is the pricing summary. We did, we stayed flat on our deductibles, which I know there are some districts that did go up on some of their deductibles. Um, we stayed flat on our deductibles. We actually increased, um, uh, cyber, um, liability. That was one of the increases, um, in our policy. And for next year, um, without, without including the overage that we paid, we went up point six-two percent. So actually, after figuring in the overage, we actually came out level. I talked to you guys a little bit about that on the twenty-second, but it was, uh, it was a pleasant surprise. Um, overall, um, the, 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 the group also, um, went ahead and approved some, some, I guess, policies in that, we will, we as a cooperative will never move to a percentage deductible like some of the other property and casualty insurances are moving to. Some of them are even moving to them, uh, without the knowledge of the district. It's just, it's in the renewal and then they just automatically, uh, find out that it's in there. So, um, our KICKS, which used to be called Kermit, you might have heard me say it before, or Kermit. Um, it's the cooperative again through KBS. So they have now changed it to Kansas Insurance Cooperative for Schools. Um, I don't know why they changed that, but I guess they thought it sounded better. But again, uh, for the price of, um, a hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and, and ze, and six cents, you know, I recommend that we, we continue to move with them because we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna find anything at that price, to be honest with you.
I move to approve the contract with KICKS for property casualty vehicle cyber and liability insurance as presented.
Second. Been moved in?
Sorry, do I need to put the?
The amount?
No, no.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded all in favor? I suspect five zero. Okay, item D, All-Star High School Recognition.
Well, I just wanted to bring this up in our, in our meeting, uh, to, to recognize the high school and the efforts that they've had. The Kansas Board of Regents recognized, uh, several schools among the state of Kansas in the All-Star High School recognition. That means that they hosted an Apply Kansas event, submitted the Apply Kansas summary data, sponsored a FAFSA completion event in, in partnership. We did it in partnership with Barton County. Uh, Hope does a great job of, of communicating and working with them. Hosted a Senior Signing Day event and ours takes place pretty much throughout the year. If a student signs, we, um, you know, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Um, Mason and, and Hope work really well to be able to recognize those students and then complete the All-Star, uh, survey. So, um, through efforts with Mr. Kraft and Mr. Mason and, and Ms. Randolph at the high school, I thought it was a, a great, a great thing to recognize them for.
Great job.
Yeah, thank you.
It's all Hope.
All right, um, item E, old trophies disposal.
Okay, I brought this up. I've been, I've been asked basically since I got here, uh, about, what, what are we supposed to do with these boxes of trophies? So, um, in, in the garage, um, I believe it was the summer before Sherry got here. I think it was Harold and Diane and, and a few of the other custodians were tasked with the idea of boxing up per decade, some of the old trophies. Now, none of these trophies have anything to do with any of the Kasia-sponsored activities. All of those are already at the high school. These would be, um, middle school trophies. These would be, um, you know, invitational trophies, trophies that would have been received throughout the eighties and nineties. We've kind of gotten away from trophies and it went to plaques and, and now it's, now it's kind of a mixed bag. So I did look today, um, in, in our policies and at this point in time, we don't have a, um, a policy on disposable, disposal of, um, these trophies. I know, and I bring it up because I know if I just throw them in the dumpster, somebody's gonna say something. But I also want, you know, to have the input of the board because they're, they're your property as well. And it's not just throwing away or, or disposing of, like, trash. You know, somebody actually had something to do with these. So, um, so, you know, questions, comments? Would you like me to look into what other districts have done in the past? We are talking about probably twelve large boxes of trophies. Again, all the way back to the seventies.
Would there be an opportunity to do something like we did with the old uniforms over Labor Day? And be like, hey, if you've earned this trophy, like, come.
My mind had a went to like that similar thing, right? Like.
Right.
Probably some sort of, you know, I guess some sentimental, but also some achievement value with it. I'm sure people around with that.
So.
You did mention that.
So, so in, in some, in some conversations, the idea of, okay, we, we put tables up in the high school gym. And I haven't talked to you guys about this, sorry. Um, we, we put tables, uh, we put table, I'll, I'll do this. I will do this. Set tables up at the high school gym, put the, put the trophies out by decade, advertise it and publicize it through the Labor Day timeframe. Then, um, what's left goes away. Is that agreeable to the board?
Gives an opportunity out there, which I think is the most important thing, so.
Yeah. Right. And we'll, and we'll start talking about it now. I mean, we'll, we'll start advertising, hey, over Labor Day, there'll be the opportunity, if you have any interest in any, you know, trophies from the decades of the seventies, eighties and nineties.
Would that be an opportunity for the FCC L A kids or some of those that volunteer around Labor Day to help you with that project?
That would be a great idea. Yep. Yep. So I'll, I'll talk to some of them and, uh, maybe some of the, um, oh, I know NHS does some, does some stuff as well, so, yep.
Sounds like a good idea.
Sounds good. And we'll probably center, I know Mr. Mason volunteers his time and opens up the high school. I'll supervise the trophies. I know, I mean, we're not, I'm not gonna tackle anybody if they try to take one. But if they want it, take it. But, you know, centered around that idea of, you know, people wanna be at the high school to, to take tours and stuff like that. I may also encourage people to take tours and be in the high school as well, so.
Yeah, my mind went there too.
And we'll open up that, that gym entrance so people can, can come in and get, get that, so. Okay, Tyler will be pleased. So.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, reports. Let's start with Mrs. Walker.
Um, good evening. It's gonna be very short and sweet. I mean, we finished the school year and that was great. Uh, all of our field trips that were taken at the end of the school year were all very successful. The kids had a great time. The teachers did a wonderful job planning. We had our Roosevelt relays, which I think is al- always a lot of fun. I love it. It's probably my favorite day of the whole entire school year. We had great help from the high school, so thank you to Joel and Fair and they always, um, helped me get all of that arranged and stuff. The kids did great. And then I had talked to you about our, uh, we were doing our preschool pre-regi- pre-registration differently. We were doing it all online. It worked phenomenal, so we will never go back. Um, it worked wonderfully. Parents were in and out in like three minutes. Um, we just had iPads ready. Um, it worked really well. They are already in our Power School system, so there's no inputting anything. So, yeah, that's, that is it in a nutshell. Any questions? Nope, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you have a great summer.
You too.
Hello. We ended the year with a variety of tours. Uh, second graders, or the first graders came over and visited our second grade classrooms. It was nice to meet all of them. They seemed like a great group and really excited for next year. And our fifth grade went to the middle school to check it out over there. We also had a variety of trips. Um, they went to the theater, the alley, the historical society. And this year, the fourth grade did something pretty cool. They did a walking tour in town and, and visited the Hoyzington Historical Society, went to the post office, mailed letters. Uh, so that was pretty neat. We also had our field day. Um, thank you to the middle school Ks for helping with that. Uh, we had a great group of middle schoolers that helped with that. We couldn't have done it without them. Uh, we actually had a not windy day, which has never happened. That was nice. Uh, we also had our last honor roll. It had great attendance. Um, the bleachers were really full. Great to see everybody attend that. Um, we're preparing for our jumpstart program. It will run August first through fourteenth in just the mornings. We have about seventy students invited to that, uh, so hopefully we have good attendance for that. Uh, we attended the USA Conference as an admin team. Uh, we learned some ways to improve our Cardinal families, how to engage parents and a few other items. Uh, this summer, I've got a few projects going on. We'll be, I'm going to be working on the letters training for admin. And that was some of our reading, um, prac- best, best practices. Uh, there's actual course for admins, not just teachers, so I'll be taking that. We'll be working on our new reading curriculum. Sorry, my baby is crying. Uh, we'll be collecting our orders, um, for the start of the year. Um, we'll also be taking the restorative practices for admin training course and Title IX training. So looking forward to all that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Middle school finished the year off with our eighth grade promotion. Uh, I believe we're in and out in thirty-five minutes, so, uh, pretty efficient. Then we had our sixth and seventh grade award ceremony on the last day of school. Went pretty smooth, had, had a lot of awards there. Um, we've got our state assessment data back, um, and I think, I believe parents can see that on the parent portal if they wanna take a look at that. We had our end of the year BLT meeting. Uh, good discussion there. It was, it was very productive. We had some good sessions at the USA Conference. I, uh, went to one where, uh, it gave me, uh, where we talked about making sure our teachers are given quality instruction that align with the standards so our kids are getting, um, getting taught what, what we need to be teaching them. Uh, we went to one, uh, session where they talked about having systems in place so things run a little bit more efficient. And then, um, several sessions on how to use data, um, and make it more meaningful to our teachers, our students and our stakeholders. Again, so that we can look back and make sure our, our, our instruction is getting the results that we want. Um, and that, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing our service to the kids. So with all that said, you know, that gave us, that gave Nick and I, uh, some good ideas that we need to, we'll sit down and discuss over this last week and, you know, start setting a direction for where we want to head, uh, next school year. So, that's about all I got. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, middle school activities finished strong and had good end of the season. Uh, our final athletes of the month were Bentley Corbett and Annika Hines. They both did phenomenal at their respective sports. Uh, our schedules for next year are already online and readily available on Facebook and our district webpage. Feel free to go look at those if you're needing. Otherwise, we're just beginning the process of looking for some coaches. Currently looking for assistant football, a couple wrestling coaches and a track coach. That's pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have ten students currently taking, uh, career recovery classes, um, online right now with Mrs. Harmon. She does an excellent job overseeing that, that process. So we are in week two of three. We actually have one kid finish his class already and, um, most of them are ahead of schedule, so we're making good progress there. Uh, as you're aware, we are still in search of a math teacher at the high school, so, um, I try to put the word out every platform possible, so. Still trying to get that taken care of, but I will say that Mrs. Randolph and I did meet with Barton Community College a couple of weeks ago to, uh, figure out a way to offer college algebra and stats, at least at the high school. Those are the two main college courses that, that we. college courses that, that we have been able to offer. We feel like we have a good plan in place to be able to do that. Um, just waiting on approval on Barton's end. So, um, that's where we're at with that. We'll keep you up to date as we go through that. Driver's Ed has heavy sessions this summer. Mr. Haxson's in session one right now with twenty-five students and the next session will have twenty-four. So a lot of new drivers on the roads this summer. Good, bad, or whatever, so. And then, uh, the conference USA last week was a really good conference. There's dozens of breakout sessions, sessions to choose from. Um, we all go to six of them. And two that really, uh, stuck with me were, um, two sessions with Gwen Mundorf Law Firm. They are based out of Missouri and they've solely, um, deal with public schools. Uh, so they had a lot of good insight. Um, one of them that they talked about was usage of cell phones and discipline within that. Um, and then the other one that I, uh, went to was on investigations, dealing with students, staff and students and staff. So really opened my eyes to, you know, some situations that could arise, uh, but I really felt like I probably could sit out there and listen to them all day. Um, so that was, that was, um, good information to get. A couple others I went to was using data, um, mainly state assessment data and screeners, uh, but then also one on building positive culture within the school, so. Um, appreciate you guys allowing us to go to that conference. It's a, it's a good three days, a lot of information, a lot of good speakers, and then those breakout sessions. Um, usually you can find a couple of really good ones that you can take away from, so. Any, any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, you're pretty good at math, aren't you?
He's trying to recruit me again. This isn't the first time.
Tracy, what do you do? You do math stuff all day?
I do financial.
Oh, good evening.
I'll get back to you.
Twenty-three, twenty-four activities. Um, as everybody knows, we ended on another great note. High school track team took twelve kids to state, brought home twelve medals. Um, Josiah Ball repeating his three A pole vault champion was exciting. Um, boys' baseball team made history, winning first round. Um, if you were there, it was a lot of fun. Um, it was a lot of fun to watch the boys. It was exciting to, to see how excited they were to get that win. Um, lost second round, played, uh, third place game and were up a run going bottom of the seventh and just couldn't, couldn't hold on. Couldn't be prouder of the boys though, uh, ending up finishing fourth, so. Um, according to the info I was given, um, I've done a little bit of research, haven't done um, a lot of extensive, but, uh, the word is, first time in the Hoyington history, the boys' team was a regional or substate champions in all three seasons. Um, between football, wrestling and baseball. Um, that's a pretty exciting thing. Um, so special congratulations to all the boys that were part of that, all the coaches that were part of that. Um, that was really cool. Um, and we had a couple of other boys' teams that were really close to being in that, in with those, with those guys as well, so, you know, our boys, our boys had a, had a great year. Um, state, uh, overall, for all of our sports and activities, we had seventeen placed in top ten at state this year. Um, which is, uh, pretty outstanding. Um, I, in the three years I've been here, we've, we've been anywhere from five to ten, so, that's, that's pretty awesome for our kids. And, and that's not just sports, that includes our activities as well. And also brought home twenty-nine individual medals from state this year between all our sports and activities, so. Um, another cool thing. Again, congrats to those kids. Uh, quick updates on schedules. I have all the fall and winter schedules uploaded on the school website calendar. So they're there. Um, I'll have the spring as soon as I get a couple of schools to get me contracts, so I can double check and verify, uh, dates and times. Um, Jordan and I are working on getting each sport and activity individual schedules on the website. So like when you go to the high school and you click high school activities, you know, it's got all the sports and activities listed. Tracy and I have had this conversation several times already. Um, but that way, like, you know, you click on cross-country, you know, they'll, they'll have, you'll have the coaches, their contact info, then it'll have, it'll say, um, two thousand twenty-four scheduled. They'll click on the schedule and it'll be there. Um, then anytime I updated, it's, it's a, it's a link, so it's a running document. Anytime I update on my end, it automatically updates on there. Um, leave times will be on there. Um, bus leave, class dismissal will be on there. It'll also have for our home events, what teams are involved in those, in those tournaments or invitationals that we hold. So, um, something Jordan and I have talked about the last, for about a year now, and, and I think we've got it all figured out and, and, uh, Jordan does most work. He does a good job. I just gotta get him the info. So, um, we're, uh, we're working on that, so maybe that'll make it a little more user friendly. Um, you know, our, our school calendar is great, but when you're trying to figure out your entire kid's sports season, it's, sometimes it's a little tough deciphering through all that, so. We're trying to work on it, make it a little more user friendly for everybody. Um, coaching openings, I've only got two going into the summer, assistant boys wrestling, assistant track, so. Um, that's pretty exciting. That's the least amount I've ever had in, in going into year four, so. Um, you know, that's, that's a sign of good things. So, um, I was also at the conference. I'd have to echo Joel on the, on the law firm. Those, those are my favorite. Um, a lot of great info, especially with the cameras, cell phones, videos, all that going on in our schools this day and age. It's, you know, when you're sitting in our shoes, it's a, you're always second guessing yourself on how you handle the discipline side of that, you know, legally. So it was really, it was eye-opening and refreshing to hear from them, you know, how they, uh, what they recommend to schools when they talk to them on how they deal with those things, so. It gave us some great ideas on, on how we should go about it and, you know, one more network of people to reach out to. So, again, thank you, uh, for letting us go to that. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent.
So first question I have is, um, July board meeting. I want to make sure we're all on the same page. First Monday, first Monday of the month is July one. Do we want the meeting on July one or July eight?
I will put in a personal brief for not July one, having coming out of the county fair on Sunday, the thirtieth.
I will be out of state on July eighth, but I can probably attend by phone.
Okay. So I would, I mean, I would just encourage you to communicate that with me. You can do that, you know, via email, text at the meeting here, you know, so. I just, I just want us to be all on the same page and I'll have that information to you, um, you know, this Friday. So that we, we're on the same page, because that July one kind of sneaks up on people. Um, so I just want us to, to make sure that we're aware of that, so. Um, and then at that meeting, obviously I'll have the rest of the, the calendar, um, ready to go for you for, for the board meetings. Um, so a couple of things that are happening a week from today, uh, at this time, we'll be kind of wrapping up our Bike Across Kansas. Uh, this has been a process. I've been working with Bike Across Kansas since March, uh, to kind of prepare. Um, a couple of things that I'm super excited about for, for this is, is, and I've been, you know, told that this is something they don't see very often, is we're going to have a shuttle. We're actually going to drive a shuttle around, um, using our vehicles to, to, to make sure that, yes, they can be out at the activity center. We're going to have a food, uh, kind of a food truck area out there with, with several vendors and, um, but also some people may want to come into town, go to the tap room if they've been there before or, you know, head out to Pizza Hut. So we'll, we'll be heading out over to the pool, uh, area, uh, downtown to the tap room area, um, back up towards, uh, the VFW. Um, and in case somebody needs to go by the bank, the banks will be right there, uh, close. And then back around to Town and Country and then back up to the Activity Center. So we'll have that running throughout the day. Um, snacks and refreshments will start throughout the afternoon. Uh, Clara Barton is going to be selling pies. Uh, we've got elementary music and wrestling, uh, going to do water and drinks. Uh, the Cow Creek Four-H Club is doing some trail mixes. Um, Michelle Mosher is going to be having, uh, alcohol-free beer. Um, so that'll be out there as well, kind of different. The Walker Snow Cone Shack, um, and Jennifer Kenan is. What's that?
It's called Frozen Paradise.
Frozen Paradise. I hadn't gotten the official name yet, so I will change that on the document. I mean, it's important that we have the right name, so. I mean, the Walker Snow Cone Shack sounds kind of good too, but. Okay, and then, then we've got, uh, food, food trucks, um, Brand Seventeen BBQ, and then Cajun Connection will be out at the Activity Center. Uh, I'm still working with and talking to Joe, uh, Joe's Redneck Grill. He, he's kind of indicated that he'll be here at the, uh, the Alternacare Building, um, that he's using for his shop. Um, Home Brew is going to be doing a two-hour set out at the Activity Center as well. And then they have, uh, evening meeting, lights out. And then, uh, five-thirty, we get to, we get to jump in and do it all again and have, uh, breakfast. So we've got five, uh, we've got five or six different, um, uh, organizations coming in and doing, um, breakfast as well, so. And then by eleven o'clock, um, they'll be off towards Lincoln, so they, they will sleep the, the next night in Lincoln, so. Um, really, really neat activity. I mean, super, super nice organization to work with, um, so far, so. Uh, looking forward to showcasing our facilities. Any questions about Bike Across Kansas? That one's kind of a big one. Uh, that, that's kind of taken up some, some, some time. Um, so Bart's Construction will start in on the press box about mid-June. Uh, they're still waiting on a few materials to be, uh, to be shipped in, so they're, they're working towards that and communicating with me all along the way through that process. Um, next year's KISA cycle will be a little bit different. Remember, KISA is our accreditation process. Um, so typically, what we've done the past six or seven years is we would have what they call an outside visitation team come in and we would present to them in the spring. And, uh, the new KISA process is we will actually set down early fall on September fourth with a state representative and talk about the progress that we have made, uh, the structures that we have put into place and, um, kind of been, begin to prepare for then an October tenth meeting that will take place at ESDAC. At that meeting, we will be presenting, um, with three other districts. Um, we're working with Leon Blue Stem, um, USD two oh five, Pratt, USD three eighty-two, Smoky Valley, USD four hundred, and then ourselves. And we will have a presentation, um, and then there'll be discussion after each one of the groups present. And then at that point in time, we're accredited until we're not accredited. So it'll be a five-year cycle again. And we will, we will have this type of cycle for the next five years, having discussions and, and, um, working with other districts. We, uh, Blue Stem is not necessarily our size. They're, they're a little bit smaller than us. You know, Pratt and Smoky Valley are our size. Um, but we all have things that we can gain from each other and talk through, um, what's working well in our districts, what's not necessarily working well. And, um, you know, kind of work through that process together. And then, um, you know, there are several, there are a couple of other steps in terms of like, um, uh, compliance issues that we'll need to make sure and meet, uh, which are basically things that we do on an annual basis anyway. Um, so, um, so that's a little bit different process. Um, and we'll, we'll continue to update you on how that process goes and, and the presentations that we'll be doing and, and we'll talk about some of the data as we get, as we get further along into, um, the summer and, and early fall. Um, questions about KISA? And then the final thing I have is, uh, daycare. Um, we're still working on the contract and lease to make sure we've got that ironed out between, um, ABCC and that the first daycare facility has their temporary license. And the Great Bend daycare facility is open as of today. So that's a huge, that's a huge accomplishment. So, um, so, um, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Item H, board member reports. Anybody got anything? I, legislative report.
I don't have a legis- legislative report. It did look like that, um, Senate Bill three eighty-seven did pass. Um, and it was signed by the governor with a line item veto, and I don't know exactly what that line item veto was. The, the other thing is that there probably will be a special session because a tax bill did not, uh, it was vetoed by the governor and they could not over, overturn that veto. Um, that's that, that's, it's not always great news. I mean, there, so they, they want to pass a tax bill, obviously. But anything is fair game during a special session. So all of the work that was put into Senate Bill three eighty-seven is not necessarily like cut etched into stone. So, um, so, um, we'll kind of see how that, um, you know, comes out. I have not heard anything as to when the special session would be. Uh, again, I have not been paying attention on that as well, so.
Okay, item nine, personnel. I move we go into executive session for thirty minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under KOMA. Exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Proud as present and the opportunity to call administrators as needed.
Yep, that's perfect.
Second.
Open meeting will resume at eight thirty-seven. Been moved in second at all in favor. Okay, passes five zero. Motions. I move to accept the resignation of Alex Westhoff for Lincoln Social Worker.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor. Passes five zero. I move to accept the nomination of Lydia Burris for the position of Roosevelt Aid twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor. Passes five zero. I move to accept the nomination of Yvette Nava.
Nava.
Nava. For the position of Roosevelt Aid for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor. Passes five zero. I move to accept the nomination of Jordan Hammack for the position of Middle School Science for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor. Five zero. I move to accept the nomination of James Warner for the position of Route Bus Driver for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor. Five zero. Okay, and we were all okay with the?
As amended.
As amended for that band.
For the?
Yep.
Okay. I move to accept the nominations of the middle and high school coaches and sponsors for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Who said that?
Oh, sorry.
You? Moved in second at all in favor. This is five zero.
And you got Brian, okay.
I move to accept the nomination, um, of Brian Williams for Lincoln Elementary Counselor position for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor. Passes five zero. Okay, that's all of them, right?
That's it.
Someone said it should be as presented, or is there a modification?
There's a slight modification.
Did I say as amended?
You didn't say as presented, but I don't know what.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
It's just a slight amended, so.
Okay. I move we go into executive session for five minutes pursuant to discuss the exception of employer-employee negotiations under KOMA to discuss negotiations training and negotiations letter with Mr. Proud as president.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor. Five zero. We will resume at eight fifty.
Have a good evening.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, coming out of executive session with no motion. Item eleven adjourned, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second at all in favor. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you all.
Passes five zero, sorry.